Thank you very much. Kathleen, how about a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Is he here via Zoom?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so he is here.
Commissioner Seifert is absent. Chair Dickerson.
I believe I am here.
And Commissioner Lopez is unmuted now if you want to hear him. Stay here.
All right, stay here. Good.
Thank you.
Always like to hear his voice. We need to get an approval of the planning commission minutes of July 6th. If everyone has had a chance to read them or if there's any questions about them, now would be the time. Otherwise, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the July 6 meeting minutes.
Have a second?
I abstain.
How about Tom?
Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Mine.
Okay, we have an abstention.
Mr. Chair, I'm terribly sorry to interrupt you, but because we are, we do have a remote commissioner, all votes tonight will need to be by roll call. Sorry.
You do love your votes, don't you? I asked your boss, he said you didn't need them, but okay. All right, let's have, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Oh, Commissioner Hernandez, stay.
I abstain.
There we go. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited discussions of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. This is also for, this is for anything that is not already agendized. Does anyone have anything? And I know you'll have a statement about the Zoom. You might as well go ahead and do that now and then we'll, we'll see if anybody has anything they want to talk about.
Okay, great, thank you. So if you're on Zoom and you wish to comment on an agenda item that's at hand, please use the raised hand feature and then I will call on you in the order that the hands are raised. If, if you are dialing in, please press star nine in order to raise your hand and the comment, the time to comment will be three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody either in-house or out in the universe that would like to speak to us? No? Nobody wants to talk to us? Emotionally distressing. Public hearings, let's see. We will move on to the number one, which is Industrial Parkway Battery Storage Plan Development Permit at 2916 Industrial Parkway. And we hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. This is for a proposed industrial.
Wait, I'm sorry, Tom is raising his hand.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself in this item as I have a conflict of interest in the source of income for me in early 2020. So I will recuse myself in this.
All right.
And I can stay on or if you, I can see you guys at the next study session.
Why don't you go ahead and say, sit at the next study session and enjoy the rest of your evening, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it? All right. Then we will move on. Frank, sorry about that.
Thank you. This is an application for a battery storage facility that will be hooked into the energy grid and supply power to supplement peak hour, our demands. The site is located on Industrial Parkway. The address is 2916 Industrial Parkway. Currently, it is a vacant property. It was part of the Concha subdivision map, which happened more than a decade ago. Here's a closer view. You can see the current site is vacant, graded, but unimproved. There are some trees out on the frontage and there are some accessways that were improved with the subdivision development, one of those being on the south side of the parcel. I'll also note at this time, there's various easements on all sides of the parcel that limit the extent of the developable project within the site. The site is zoned PDM1, as is all the sites surrounding the facility. So we feel that this is appropriate use for the site and also won't impact the neighboring So here's a graphic of the site. The site has no buildings, no occupiable buildings, but instead is consisting of six battery storage containers, which are these items here. And then there are also inverters to help convert the power. As I'm looking at this, it looks like there's actually eight battery storage units, not just six, but that's fine. It all fits within the site and the inverters are here. As I mentioned, these will all be connected to the existing PG&E lines that run adjacent to the site. So there's not a lot of interconnection needed between the site and the existing electrical grid. The storage containers are 32 feet long by 12 feet wide and approximately 10 feet tall and the inverters are approximately 19 feet by 12 feet and less than 10 feet tall in height. The site will be an enclosed yard. The frontage will have a slumpstone or decorative block masonry wall that will be six feet in height. There will be landscape along the frontage, so screening the wall and helping soften the appearance from Industrial Parkway. And then the other elevations of the yard will have a six-foot-high chain link fence with some portions having screening straps. And then the applicant has also requested a one-foot additional height of barbed wire, which is also required by the fire department for safety dealing with an electrical facility. So the total height of the fencing will be seven feet in height. The front wall is six feet. As I mentioned before, there will be landscaping on the street side. There's also landscaping along the northern perimeter of the site to help screen from views essentially coming southbound on Industrial Parkway. The south side of the site and the north side of the site all have easements. The south side is a reciprocal access easement and the north side, both utility and reciprocal access easements and other easements, which prevent any landscaping from being placed on these perimeters of the site. Planning staff was not concerned necessarily with the west-facing elevation because that's just further industrial sites within this subdivision and we do appreciate the applicant provided some screening slats in the fencing for the south elevation. There are four trees, street trees required of the project, which the applicant is providing as shown here, which will also help screen the equipment that's slightly higher than the fence, but we feel that the added screening by the trees will adequately screen any equipment inside, inside the site. And I will just mention the applicant is in attendance tonight and also has a presentation. And in their presentation, they do have some examples of what these energy battery storage units look like. They essentially look like the trailer on a tractor-trailer truck. They're just limited to the height of 10 feet. So I did mention there will be a masonry wall on the front. This is your standard CMU block. What is required and what the applicant has agreed to is a decorative masonry block wall, either slumpstone or split face, and this will be facing the street. And here's the elevation of a typical fence. Seven-foot height will be the total, including the barbed wire that's proposed. And that concludes staff's presentation. I would just note that environmentally, this project qualifies for an exemption under CEQA as an infill project. There's no habitats, no issues of contamination on the site, no issues caused by the project that would require any mitigation. Therefore, the site qualifies for a exemption under CEQA. And that concludes staff's presentation. Our recommendation is that the planning commission by motion approve plan development permit PD 202112.
Thank you very much, Frank. Before I ask for any questions by commissioners, is there any disclosure by any commissioners of communication, ex parte communication with the applicant? And Tom, on? So, okay, then are there any questions of staff at this time?
Chair, I do have a quick question. Frank, so the south side is not being screened the same way. What's, what's on the south side? What kind of development or what's the property that's just south of the site?
So here again is a close-up aerial of the site. The south side of the project is basically the yellow line here. As you can see, the driveway, the accessway is essentially split between this parcel and the parcel to the south. Right now, there's a truck storage facility that I believe is in process, requesting approval, but that's what the property is being used for currently is the storage of vehicles and trucks. This Concha development did have a PD plan that was approved. Again, this was more than 10 years ago. That PD plan has expired at this point and there were plans for additional buildings. The building just immediately to the south, the lower end of the photo here, I believe was one of the ones that was modeling or was the model for the other buildings that were proposed under that master PD that came in with the subdivision. Being that that's expired, there's essentially no plan development permit approvals on the site any longer. Therefore, this plan development permit will become the approved site for this, if approved for this project. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We hear from the applicant, please. If you could, yeah. Name your, your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Brian Madigan. I live at 80 Virginia Street in Portland, Maine, and I'm with Renewable Properties. I'm a permitting manager there. And so I'm here tonight to discuss our Industrial Parkway standalone battery energy storage project.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
And are there some of your folks on Zoom?
Yes, we have our vice president of development, Stephanie Lucas, Brian Smith, who is our battery expert, and Jeff Dodd, our counsel. Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present and be here this evening. In terms of what I wanted to cover this evening, I'm going to start with an overview of Renewable Properties, who we are as a company, and some background about our power purchase agreement with 3CE Central Coast Energy. And talk a little bit about our site selection process, how we came to this particular location, and then discuss our, some technical aspects around batter, battery energy storage, kind of how it functions and hopefully get in front of any questions you might have in that respect. And then discuss some specifics about how this project, as Frank has already mentioned, conforms with the zoning district and general plan guidelines. So that, excellent.
We're trying to make sure your mic is on.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned that it might not be, and I'm sorry that you're. Is the light on?
No, it is not.
Well, actually, I think I already just. There you go. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure they were ready.
Okay.
I thought something was going on there, yeah.
So, next slide. And next slide. So a bit about renewable properties. We were founded in 2017. We're headquartered in San Francisco and made up of about 30, I think 32 employees at this time. So we develop, finance, own and operate small-scale solar and battery projects across the United States. Currently, we have 18 projects in operation totaling about 50 megawatts and we have about 600 megawatts of community-scale solar and battery energy storage projects in our queue that we're hoping to develop over the next couple of years. So I think what sets us apart maybe from other developers is that we hope to be and want, plan to be responsive, responsive to community concerns and easy to work with, which will come up later in, in the presentation. And I think, you know, you know, at the end of the day, we're a collection of individuals who are driven to fight climate change and enhance the function of the grid through this energy transition that, that we're going through now. Next slide. So some context here about how this project came to be. And so I believe it was in 2020, Central Coast Community Energy put out a request for proposal, which we responded to with a bid and we ended up winning for battery storage projects. There were several projects as part of this initial RFP, but we were able to, to land this particular one. And, and so just a bit about 3CE, they are your local community choice aggregator and community choice aggregators are governmental entities that were formed to aggregate customer electric load and purchase power for electric, electrical customers. So 3CE serves Monterey, San Benito, Santa Cruz, and parts of San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara counties. And so CCAs are working aggressively to advance California's aggressive renewable energy goals and zero-carbon goals as well. And so they're really prioritizing renewable energy generation, which is a reflection of customer preference. So with greater and greater energy or electricity coming from renewable sources, battery energy storage is becoming a very important component of our, our resource mix and will help, you know, advance the, the penetration of renewable resources in general. So next slide. So just a quick overview on our site selection process. Generally, we look for sites that are flat, free of flood zones, clear of any wetlands, biological resources, and have access to the grid as well as road infrastructure for vehicular access. And we generally try to find sites that do not require a variance or change of zone. And so all of this particular site suits all of those, those needs. Next slide. Some, some technical discussion here on, on battery storage. So basically, it's a collection of batteries that are situated in a enclosure that looks similar to a shipping container. The nice thing is they require minimal development footprint. So within this, it's basically a little bit less than an acre in terms of the whole parcel area, but I believe the actual project area fits on about a little more than a half an acre. So we can get a lot of electricity situated on a very small footprint as opposed to, say, a gas fire plant or a nuclear plant. The footprint is, is very small and compact. And so battery storage, unlike other generating facilities, is unique in that it can also serve as load. So it can absorb energy during times where there's excess power on the grid. So it can basically, you know, soak up that additional excess power, which might be during periods of low demand or during periods when, you know, in the springtime, when solar and wind are really, you know, performing at their best, we can optimize the energy intake from the facility and then use that to shave off peak load during high demand. And so that versatility associated with batteries really enhances the reliability of, of the grid in general. So, so batteries offer supply capacity. They offer ancillary services to help balance and control frequency and support voltage. They can, they can respond to, you know, instant, almost instantaneous changes in load or demand. They're, they're highly dispatchable and responsive to those changes and can help balance the transmission and distribution grid as well and offer what's called Black Start, which is basically, you know, if there was some sort of catastrophic failure on the grid and you had to restart the entire system, a battery storage project or a hydro project have that unique capability to get things back in motion. Next slide. So this is a typical cross-section of what a, what an enclosure looks like. And so it's, you know, the majority is comprised of battery packs, but there are also enclosed within this system is, or storage container, is the battery management system. And that is a monitoring system that provides the remote operator information about the system performance. And that system can also self-diagnose and respond to any issues that may come up during operation. And also within the, the container are a liquid cooling and heating system, which helps to control the conditions within the battery. And that system pumps basically water or glycol mix throughout the unit to help control and stabilize the, the temperature inside. Additionally, there's basically an HVAC or chiller unit that's located at the, the end of the cabinet and a DC junction box, which collects all of the, the electricity from each of the, the battery, battery, battery packs and transmits it to the inverter, which is located on the outside of the actual container, which then gets stepped up with the transformer to the distribution level voltage and the power is put out onto the grid. And there's also a fire detection system, which includes heat and smoke sensors throughout the cabinet, as well as a standpipe that will connect to water supply, which is part of the safety, emergency response kind of aspects of, of the project. And so next slide. So wanted to address some common concerns, which frequently come up around these project, projects in general as well, which would be, you know, first, from a noise perspective. We provided a copy of our energy service agreement to, to staff on March 9th, which is relevant because it's our understanding that public utility type uses are exempt from noise, from the noise, what's the word, limitations. And so I understand, you know, for this particular district, it's 75 during, 75 dBA during the day and 70 at night. The noise associated with the project will, will primarily come from the inverters and the climate control units. But I would note, you know, we, we fully expect that the project will comply with those standards and, and also note that we are, or there are no sensitive receptors within 500 feet. So I think at the property lines, we will not be above those particular thresholds, but just wanted to note that power or public utility type uses are exempt. And from a traffic perspective, there's really no, or the, the impact would be negligible. It's basically, you know, from an operations and maintenance standpoint, one person going to the site per month, kind of performing routine maintenance. And so there's really, you know, after we're complete with construction, there'll be no impact traffic resources. Next slide. And so from a safety perspective, we, as mentioned, intend to be the owner-operator of the project and so we have a long-term investment here as well. And we intend to protect the health, safety and welfare of the communities we build projects in. So, you know, the safe operation of this particular project will serve the, the community as, as much as it serves us, from our financial obligations to insurance obligations. And, you know, as mentioned in the, the previous couple of slides, there are various and multiple levels of safety and control measures that would ensure that the, the project in and of itself is monitoring its performance and any issues that might pop up will, will be operated remotely. So basically, all the information is transmitted to an off-site location where the operator is, is, is responding to and, and monitoring the conditions at the project site. And then we also, you know, intend to work closely with the city EMS services to make sure that they feel comfortable and confident in any, you know, potential event. And so that's all to say, we also have to comply with numerous codes and regulations and a few of those are listed here. Next slide. So I guess Frank's kind of already gone into some, some detail here about the site characteristics, but just to reiterate, the, the site itself is, is pretty perfect for a battery energy storage facility. It's kind of nestled within a pre-existing load zone. So it'll help to reinforce the reliability of the existing distribution system in that particular area, as well as, you know, ensure that those nearby uses, you know, have even more redundancy and resiliency for particular power issues that, that could come up or reliability issues. Let's see. And again, the, the project is 10 megawatt for our capacity system and we have executed a purchase option agreement with our landowner. So that's kind of the framework behind the land transaction. Next slide. And Frank went over our particular layout. It's, I guess, just add, you know, or re, reinforce, it's, it's eight battery cabinets, four equipment pads that will have the transformers and inverters, and then the inner, point of interconnection with the pre-existing distribution grid is kind of to the northeast of the project site and actually requires very minimal upgrades from, from PG&E standpoint. So there is capacity on this, this line at this time to handle the amount of electricity the project would send into the grid and absorb from the grid. Next slide. So this is kind of what a typical battery storage container looks like, you know, shipping container, pretty nondescript. Next slide. Next slide. And just some, some local examples of where other projects have been approved within the last couple of years. Santa Barbara County, City of Goleta, and City of Santa Paula have all permitted several projects that are actually similar in scale to, actually, they're, they're all larger than ours, so just wanted to, to bring that up. And I guess, next, next slide. So, again, we believe or understand that the project is consistent with the existing zoning regulations. The nearby uses will benefit from the reliability enhancements associated with the project that will provide to, you know, again, to the grid. And the site has been previously disturbed, and there would be no impact to any sensitive receptors, you know, there are none basically within five hundred feet of the project. So, from a, from a location perspective, I think we look pretty good. Next slide. So, you know, as, as we transition to, to more supply of renewable energy resources, battery storage projects like this are going to be a major component of maintaining the overall reliability of the grid and, and allowing us to source more of our electricity from those resources. So, we, I guess, you know, appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant at this?
I just have a, a couple of questions. Thanks, Chair. So, for the site surfacing material, are you guys going to just put some gravel down, or what kind of surface do you guys expect out there?
Yes, it would be kind of gravel surrounding the actual storage containers.
Okay, great. And then, I think you answered my other question with other nearby facilities that, are those your guys' facilities that you cited up there, or they're just other facilities that you know of?
Yeah, just other facilities that, that we know of.
They're built already, or they're in the process, maybe, or?
You know, they are all...
Just curious.
Yeah, they're all approved. I actually didn't look to see if, if they were all operational. I think the one in 2017, hopefully, is built and operational at this time.
Okay. And then, distribution would be the energy in, in Santa Maria. I presume that that distribution would be for energy here.
Correct.
For residents here in, in Santa Maria. Okay, great. Thank you, that's it.
I have a question.
Good question.
Regarding the maintenance technicians, how often do they go to the site?
Planned maintenance would, you could expect maybe one trip a month, just to perform routine, kind of preventative-type maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The first is the noise level, you, I mean, you, you indicated what our, what our code is, but you did not give a number on your machines, which I do understand from what you said where you're exempt from, but I would still like to know what that number is.
Yes, so, it's an interesting question, because we, at this time, we, we proposed certain technology in our application, but, you know, it's, the technology is evolving all the time, and so, the particular technology listed in our application is seventy-five DBA. The problem is that it doesn't tell us exactly where that is measured from, so I would anticipate that, you know, if you were standing at the edge of the parcel, it would not exceed the, the noise standards or regulations. But I think what might be a fair compromise is, you know, once we get our final, we've selected a final vendor, and we know exactly the equipment that we're going to install, we could work with staff to ensure that the particular vendor we choose, that that equipment won't adversely, or, I guess, will comply with the, the city's noise regulations.
I see. So, in essence, you, you guys are not the manufacturer of these batteries, you are the, the landholder that rents it out, is that?
No, we, we would essentially be developing the, the site, and so, we will own and operate the facility, but we're, we're purchasing the equipment from a, from an outside vendor.
I see. Okay. And then, the, as Frank pointed out, the diagram showed eight facilities, but we in our, in our packet show six. Which is it, six or eight?
Eight.
Eight. Okay. And then, as far as the, the energy, I assume a hundred percent of the energy is not going into Santa Maria, is it? Or, or is all of the energy going into, or are you going to farm it out to whoever needs it?
Well, it's difficult to track an electron, but I will say, because we are interconnecting at the distribution level, it is more likely that that energy or electricity stays local because of just the way the, the grid works.
Local being Santa Maria?
Santa Maria. I, I am not, you know, intimately familiar with the, the, all the distribution lines and substations in Santa Maria, but, or the surrounding area, but, you know, so, so energy or electricity at the distribution level stays pretty local, whereas higher voltage transmission level can be exported, you know, across the state or longer distances. So, because we're interconnecting at the distribution level, I would say it's fair to say the energy or electricity stays fairly local to Santa Maria and, you know, perhaps nearby communities.
Okay. Thanks. Can I ask a question of staff? Heather, so, because of their status, they are exempt from noise issues?
Yeah, our noise ordinance excludes from those provisions activities necessary to continue to provide utility service to the general public, whether this service is installing additional facilities, restoring worn or damaged facilities, and/or maintaining existing service. I'm reading from chapter five point, five dash five point eleven. I'm, I'm assuming that's the section that everybody's relying on. I don't know if planning made that determination about the utility or, or what, but it would appear that it would fit.
Okay. Has planning made a determination on that?
Not specifically on the whether or not there's an exemption, but the information that we did gather from the applicant with their submittal would indicate that even if there weren't an exemption, the information they provided us indicated that the noise levels would meet our code requirement.
And if, if they choose a different vendor with a different technology and it goes above seventy-five, will you make a determination on whether they are exempt or not?
Most likely what we will do as planners is, is discuss that with the city attorney and confirm what the city attorney just read is applicable to this project. But I would, if, since the applicant seems willing to provide us that information, I could suggest that we include a condition that at the time of building permit review, the applicant provide the acoustic data for the equipment that is being installed. And we'll just leave it at that, with the intent that hopefully the applicant finds equipment that will still meet our code requirements. If not, we can do the second option, which is double-check with the city attorney that they're exempt. This statement can simply be, at the time of building permit, the applicant shall provide the acoustic data for the equipment provided.
That sounds reasonable. Is that reasonable for you guys?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. Okay. That's all the questions. I have any further questions?
No.
No? All right. Any last words?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public. Oh, excuse me, was there any, does anybody wish to make any comments from the public?
I don't have any hands raised on Zoom, and we don't have any requests in here, so, nope.
Okay. Suzanne, you sure? It's your last moment, you could ask, no? All right, ask in the glory of it. Okay. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners, and any motions that care to be made.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we approve item one, add industrial parkway battery storage plan development permit at twenty-nine sixteen Industrial Parkway, with the additional condition that at the time of the permit review, the applicant provide acoustic data for the equipment being provided.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Kathleen, we're going to need person-by-person roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Hi.
Commissioner Blanco?
Hi.
Chair Dickerson?
Hi. Best of luck to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to closing this up. Number two, oral reports from planning commission and staff. Do we have anything from staff?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. This is Dana Eadie, planning manager. Just a couple of things to update you on tonight. So, for our upcoming schedule, we have canceled the study session for tomorrow, so we won't be having a study session. We also do not have any items for the planning commission on August seventeenth, so I would say that we would cancel that hearing. And we do have a study session planned for August eighteenth, and I'm going to present some updated information regarding the downtown projects that we're working on currently. So, that's where we're at for now with the upcoming schedule. That gets us through the end of August. The other item I wanted to mention is that yesterday there was a city council hearing, and the composite plastic systems appeal was heard by the city council, and the city council voted to uphold the planning commission's denial of that permit, and so, they denied the appeal that was filed, and the vote was a three-to-two vote. And that's everything that I have to update you on tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything from commissioners? Anything you would like to say? And I adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.